United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll Sam to call the roll. Mr. Allen? Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dobrovsky?
Here.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Present.
Mr. France?
Here.
Mr. Gobordy?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Here.
Mr. Soms?
Here.
Eight here, one absent. Thank you. Are there any resident or property owners wish to speak before the council? Okay. Committee commission board reports.
Good evening. My chair, Chair of Plans, I'd like to congratulate the council on forming the ad hoc committee. I think everybody's been sworn in, information meeting's been planned. And I know we've had a lot of discussion on what would like our zoning regs to look like. And I keep using the old Allstate commercial, plain language assurance policy. But our zoning official did find the 1963 version of our regs.
Wow.
All 28 pages. There's one page that talks about signs. There's four pages of definitions. There were two residential zones. And then my challenge is going to be what's wrong with what we had here? And why do we have to grow so much to explain the same thing we explained in 28 pages? So that's our challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissions, board reports, comments of town councilors? No comments? I do have a comment. I'm sorry. So, the past week I've been helping a few people sign on to the IQM2 portal so that they can get copies of minutes. I don't know if you've, um, you, you, councilors wouldn't have an occasion to do that because you automatically get all of the minutes. But it's, it's a pretty easy process for a taxpayer or a resident to sign on. And I guess with all the budget chat, people were asking about how to get information. And so I was showing them, a few people, how to do that. And it occurred to me, um, the same week I got information about, I never realized there was such a thing. It was called Open Connecticut. And it's something the comptroller set up. And I never knew what the comptroller did. So now at least I know one thing he did. Not that particular one, but a comptroller does. Uh, I didn't mean to sound critical of our comptroller. But at any rate, all of the information about state salaries, everything is on this particular site called Open Connecticut. And one of my regrets about IQM2, which I think is a fabulous place, is that it's called IQM2. I mean, for the average guy on the street, what the heck does IQM2 meeting portal mean? So I decided that I think that we should call the IQM2 site Open Ledger. And so I'm going to refer that idea to IT. And I think we should get a URL that points to IQM2. And just, so when people say, where do you find all this? You just say, go to openledger.com.
It's easy to remember.
Yeah. Then, rather than the IQM2 meeting and document portal. So, that's my semi-bold idea.
Which the IT committee also named. But that was kind of in a short moment. This is better.
Okay. Any other comments of town councilors? Uh, make, um, entertain a motion for a minute approval of May 14.
So move second.
Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. Gobordy?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobrovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes. Councilor.
Eight. And they were zero calls. Motion carries. You have your communications and referrals, council subcommittee liaison reports, admin. Mr. Eichelberg?
Administration committee has not met since our last meeting. Nothing to report.
Finance, Mr. France?
Finance committee met last Wednesday and all issues that were discussed are on the agenda tonight.
IT?
Information technology, yes, I'm back.
Land use?
Land use is also not met. But I would like to point out, as Mr. Cherry stated earlier, that the ad hoc regulation committee will be having their organizational meeting on June 5th at 7:00 PM here in the town council, on the annex meeting room.
Very good. Any questions? Reasigns, liaison reports. I'll start on my right. Yes.
Okay. On Board of Education, which met last Wednesday. First of all, the regulations for a couple of students, Jordan Whitschel and Kevin McCarthy, who received the K student leadership awards, another piece of student achievement. There was an aquaculture competition throughout the state, all hydro science students, and top five, Ledyard placed four, including Alyssa Gregory, who was the state number one in that competition. A good portion of the evening was spent viewing and listening to the presentation by Mr. John Ironman, the architect regarding the elementary renovated as new school study. There's a great deal there, and I know the councilors have gotten information on that. And I encourage all interested citizens to take a look at it online. But in a nutshell, I, I think it's fair to say that overwhelmingly, based on a lot of criteria, which include cost, which include safety concerns, traffic concerns, and so forth, the architect presented as favorable in the two sites, Gallup Hill School as opposed to Ledyard Center School. To be a little bit, give a little bit of simple, but in the end, we wound up rating each school site on a five-point scale. And out of five, Gallup Hill School was given a 4.2, and Ledyard Center School was given a 2. The cost was, there was a significant difference, but that was just the beginning. There was some question as to whether the state would even approve the site because of traffic issues. We currently, as many of you know, have traffic queued up on 117 getting into it. And the architect emphasized that the state may not even, would require a widening of 117 at town expense, which was not included in the study, but they estimated it as much as $5 million to do that widening, if the state would approve it at all. There were also issues at Ledyard Center regarding the potential for expanded septic, given some of the things that, well, the wetlands and some other issues that may be buried there. It's much more extensive than that, but that was their recommendation going forward. Um, let's see. Business manager reported that they had just under $35,000 in the budget for the last 21 days of school. We've gone over budget for heating and for special education, and those monies were made up from textbook and instructional supplies. There were three policies that were given a first reading. The first, and I know that some of us will be happy to hear this, the first codifies the budget meeting with the town council, which was skipped this year. So that's going to be an understood and codified arrangement. Another clarified limitations on board employees advocacy regarding upcoming budget referendum. You know, there was an issue that came up on this. And the school calendar, it was made clear that the regional school calendar is optional for the next two years and will be mandatory after that. It doesn't mean that our school calendar will be identical to other schools' calendars in the area, it's just that certain aspects of it are identical so that area-wide professional development can occur and things of that nature. But some schools will continue to have 180 days, some schools will continue to have 183 days. So it's not exactly in place. They also passed unanimously a healthy food certification statement along with the benefits to our students that will increase the reimbursement we receive by six cents a meal. And that pretty much sums it up.
And do you want to do any questions? Very good. Uh, next liaison report, Mr. France?
Uh, building committee has not met since last, but the chair of the building committee went to the facilities committee, I mean, Board of Ed last night, and they did make the vote to recommend that the Board of Ed to close Ledyard Center School and renovate its new Gallup Hill. Now we'll go before, to the Board of Ed on the June 4th meeting for consideration of potential filing.
Any questions?
WPCA did meet last night, and they are still working on the adjustments to the appeals resulting from the appeals hearings from Avery, Avery Hill Road. There are a number of issues there. Not many, but some significant ones, just a few. Mr. John Atkinson of 780 Long Cove Road, which is the former William Atkinson Estate, asked the WPCA if they would consider supporting the estate, applying for grants to bring a water main from Route 117 up Long Cove Road, it's about two miles. And there was a discussion about that, no action. It was an interesting discussion. Once again, there were no meeting minutes, and the WPCA discussed the need to nominate a secretary to take minutes to comply with town and state requirements. And then there was a larger discussion about overall administrative support, such as paying bills, posting notices, agendas, minutes, and IQM2, Open Ledger, which was just a discussion, again, no action. Budget expenses are currently exceeding revenue for both the water and the sewer side, but it was noted that the peak usage season is just beginning, so revenue should stabilize the balance sheet through the summer because that's when people use the most water. The pump station is now estimated for a, I hope the mayor's not looking at me, July 1 turn up. Maybe he already knows. The contractor is still waiting on CLMP for power. And once power is turned on, they have to flush the lines, chlorinate and test, and test the SCADA system. And if we continue not to see power or response from CLMP, the contractor plans to run the generator to get power, but that's not ideal. And just as an example, it takes three days just to chlorinate the pneumatic tank that drives the pressures of the system. So there's still a lot of things that have to be done, all dependent on hitting power. The assessment appeals committee reported that there were two assessment appeals heard during the appeals process, but they commented that one of the residents stated during the process that perhaps if the WPCA office had returned phone calls, there might have been more appeals. And we heard that as kind of a thread through the meeting. Counts receivable increased from 66,000 to 71,000, but that is anticipated to decline when the WPCA moves to monthly billing. I'll warn that in a moment. There was further discussion regarding the final assessment adjustments raised from the appeals hearing, including properties that were prematurely assessed, and the original timing of the appeals process to fit the spring tax bill schedule rather than the normal schedule designed to accommodate the appeals process. And I think there will be more discussion about that, coming again, no action. Cross connection inspection letters will be sent out beginning, they should have been started today. Remember, this is to the residents who are refusing to allow cross connections, which are required by state health code. So we had said in earlier meetings that we would send a letter explaining the whole process, so that just finally happened. WPCA is also getting quotes on demolition of abandoned assets, including the meter shed at Country Club and the pump station on Avery Hill Road. And regarding the Groton Utilities billing conversion, which starts July 1st, Groton Utilities will span the month of June, learning the CUSI system by sending personnel to monitor the WPCA office procedures throughout this month of June, this coming month of June. Then on June 30th, they will capture the Ledyard WPCA billing database and import it into, I'm sorry, Groton Utilities, version of that database. And then they'll run both systems in parallel to make sure that, so we're pretending to bill in Ledyard, but they'll actually create the bills in Groton, make sure we come up with the same answer. There was also a discussion about fire hydrants. The, under the current WPCA rate structure, the WPCA is authorized to charge the town for hydrants. For many years, we've urged the WPCA to set money aside for future infrastructure, and this is one possible way to generate revenue stream that can be set aside for future investment. The McGuire sewer study report has finally been received, but there was a discussion about some of the deficiencies in it. I'm going to skip a few things. We were reminded by Groton Utilities that the WPCA needs to submit a water supply plan. We're now three years late for that. This is also a state requirement, and something that's, we're surprised we haven't heard from the state about that. The WPCA also voted to recommend changes to ordinance 105, which establishes the WPCA in order to match the current situation, such as the having billing done by Groton Utilities. And also, we discovered, the WPCA discovered that the current ordinance does not reflect the legal requirement that the town council only sets water rates, we don't set sewer rates. So somehow we've missed that in the last couple of years, and that will be corrected, possibly tonight. Finally, WPCA needs a Democratic candidate to replace Larry Perdue, who had to resign, and we thank him for his service. And if anyone is interested in serving on the WPCA, we do need to fill a slot if you're a Democrat or unaffiliated, we'd love to hear from you. Please see the either Town Hall or the nominating committee for Democratic Party. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions? Yes.
It sounds to me that minutes were taken quite well. Thank you.
Hey, a quick question.
Yes.
What's parting the job in that 780 Long Cove to lathering the water main up?
Well, it's a, it's a large parcel of land, and there are a large number of potential homes that could be built there and with a large development. It's always better to get public water rather than drill 70 wells for 70 homes. So that's, that's the thought. But it's an interesting discussion, because if you bring water up Long Cove Road, you can then supply some very large developments further along Long Cove, which if their wells fail, if we start to see some of the events that drove us to put water mains in other parts of Ledyard, it would be a step towards getting water to those developments. So it was an interesting discussion.
And how that work comes to Groton, would that affect anything?
It would come up from 117. Groton has plenty of water to sell us. So it's really a matter of installing a main.
Up from Groton?
Up from Groton, Route 117 main coming up. It's two miles coming up. Yeah. It's two miles coming up from 117 up Long Cove.
Is this the lot by the power lines?
Yes.
Large, it's large by housing.
Yeah. Yeah. 180 acres.
Oh, wow. All those subdivisions up there have water. President Ron.
Yeah, so that's.
So are floors.
That's why it's an interesting discussion.
We had, I lived over there, and we had squaw.
Yeah. They, they do have water provided by squaw. If, if a well system were to fail, there are two options. The well system can be replenished, moved, redug by squaw, and it's unlikely, but the other possibility is if, if the system is abandoned, Ledyard might default, has to take it over and operate. And I'm not, that's not a reflection on squaw.
Look, wait, that, that well field we have, has something like 40,000 gallons a day excess.
And they do have excess water. Yeah. But that's how we got the Highlands water system. The Highlands water system was a private system. If it failed, the town led you'd have to take it over. And I'm not suggesting that would happen, but you look ahead 30, 40, 50 years, there are large plots of undeveloped land there. There are smaller systems. Lots of things could happen.
Any other questions for the WPCA? Thank you.
What's involved this water supply plan?
The water supply plan, if I recall, has to be written every five years, and it looks at Ledyard's water needs, and, and that's a perfect segue back to what we were just talking about. The water supply plan looks at what would happen if, where would development grow? Where will we need water? What do we need long-term, long-range thinking?
So is this supposed to be tied in with the plan of conservation development somehow?
It is supposed to be part of the plan of conservation development, but it also has a lot to do with the mechanics of the whole system, what we need, what we're doing to maintain it, what we're doing to make sure that we replace infrastructure when we need, when it stands on a huge document. It's been done in the past by residents who know a lot. Mr. Randy Stack pulled in it a couple of times for the WPCA, and it's usually done by either a very knowledgeable person familiar with the town's water systems or contracted that. But it's, it's something we have to do.
Any further questions? Liaison reports to my left. Any here?
We have none.
Report the mayor.
Thank you. Chairman Davis. Our, last week, myself, several town councilors, residents, state trade committee, Public Works, and ACO Marshall met with the state ACO regarding the condition of the ACO facility. This is a very informative discussion, and we cleared many of the questions that have been raised over the past several months. There were two, so I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but two conclusions that I reached was first that the state is not looking to close down facilities, but rather to note progress. And, you know, it kind of started right off when I introduced the gathering to say that, you know, we wanted to address items that the state was saying we needed to make. And he immediately corrected me in saying, we're not saying you need to make them, we're saying the improvements or the changes that you should make. And that they, again, as long as they note progress, you know, that they will be satisfied. The second is that the town needs to evaluate the mission and the policies of the ACO, and then determine the facilities required to carry out that mission. For example, one of the first things that came out, and I can't say that I'm very knowledgeable about that, probably not as knowledgeable as I should be, but that there was some burdens, there's a burden placed on the facility in order to maintain the quarantine. That is required to have a quarantine run set aside. But there's no requirement that the town quarantine out. So therefore, it makes the town have to look and determine what's the right thing to do. And I think in light of the council and the mayor trying to work together to see, you know, what is the role of government, there are some opportunities there. But besides that, I think, along with Public Works, we, you know, we can probably develop some very reasonable modifications there, and I assume the council will continue to look at that. The water, as part of the overall project here for the campus, the water has finally been rerouted from the Ledyard Center School to the Town Hall and Annex by installation of direct lines, water lines from the main in the road to both the Town Hall and here to the annex. It was an interesting experience. When that system was all closed up, we then shut off the water at the Ledyard Center School. We discovered some interesting things during that process that we probably weren't aware of. First was that the dime bank, which really preceded the water line, was directly tied to the Ledyard Center School. The good thing there is that the, they were less than 10 feet apart, the two connections, so we're able to do that rather quickly. The second was that the, we discovered in the call before you dig process that this building gets its power from the O B's building. So that's why you see some of the work going on here. So in a way, it's kind of nice that we're seeing those things now. These things could have held things up later on. But the interesting thing was when we did shut the water off, when we did finally cap the water line coming into this building and the water line coming into the Town Hall, they went across the street, the meter over at the Ledyard Center School was still kind of spinning away. So while we finally shut that off, we are hoping to, we're waiting now to see what the results are as they take the groundwater levels, which they're doing on a daily basis in the wells that were just installed. The council received a letter that was written and signed by Chairman Davis, School Superintendent Patterson, Board of Ed Chairman Cronin, and myself. And the purpose of that letter was to express to North Stonington that Ledyard had two things. First of all, it had an interest in working with North Stonington and educating their students. And secondly, that we had the capacity at the high school to educate as many of their students as they see fit to bring here. If you're reading through some of the, what's going on there, you know, we're not looking to be interlopers, we're not looking to do anything out of the ordinary, but rather we're doing the types of things that towns need to be doing, which is looking at, looking at areas where they can work together, areas that make sense in terms of cooperation and regionalization. I was disappointed to see the editorial in the day today, which seemed to put some incredible spin on, on things and, you know, gotta be careful. But, you know, that somehow if, if a town doesn't spend a phenomenal amount of money, they don't care for their children, you know, type of thing, with a little tiny note in there about how, you know, North Stonington is also looking to work with other surrounding towns. It should be just the opposite in terms of the way we look at things. But, you know, it, what has come out to me with, with my contacts with North Stonington is that, you know, this is not the only thing that's on the table, and in fact, the letter states that. And we're looking for other areas of cooperation, and other towns are looking for areas of cooperation. So I think there's an opportunity there. It's something that I think could be a win-win, not just, it's not just for Ledyard, but for North Stonington and also Preston. There's a synergy there between the three towns that could really work well and actually result in a better education system for all three towns. Finally, over the weekend, we experienced a horrific car accident in Gales Ferry, and I want to thank our emergency services for their incredible response, truly life-saving response. And we're also mostly thrilled that the outcome miraculously was less serious than anyone would have expected. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the mayor? Okay. There's no old business. Would anybody like to amend the agenda under new business? Let's move on. Number one, admin?
I will move to adopt a proposed resolution regarding the assumption of liability for the use of town facilities by certain organizations or groups as contained in the draft dated April 2nd, 2014. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
I'm just going to give you the background. Basically, in discussion with the town's liability insurance carrier, it was brought to our attention that nongovernmental groups which use town facilities, and there are quite a large, large number of them, should be required to provide liability insurance. Unfortunately, that created some conflicts with organizations that are service-oriented, don't technically fall under the town's government operations. And there's also the issue of having a consistent policy with all of the town's departments and facilities in the manner in which organizations are treated. So basically, this resolution states that quasi-government agencies, not-for-profit organizations, and small groups and clubs that use town facilities will not be required to maintain liability insurance.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Who makes the determination of which groups are falling to this? Like I can see, you have the seniors center, you have library, you have multiple locations that are all under different control, no one individual responsible for determining that. And you have people that are, groups are within the town, like the garden club, and we have other groups that are outside the town that are committed to facilities. Who makes, who makes the ultimate determination? It's not specified.
I'm going to defer to the mayor, but my, my suggestion is, is that each of these groups would probably bring their request to the mayor's assistant, and it would be considered at that point. Mayor?
Well, we have several different types of facilities. We have, for instance, just two off the top of my head, the library, the senior center. Today at the, I was at the senior commission meeting, and the question came up about this, and I indicated that they should, in fact, find out the disclaimer statement that is or will be approved by the council, and they should add that to their, to their form, their application that groups use. When it, when it comes down to it, I think we have to leave some discretion to the individual groups as to what groups as to what, who uses their facility. So I don't know how we would differentiate that, unless you could be more specific about...
Well, I guess my question would come, then I can shop the locations. I could go to the senior center, they said no, and then I go to the library and they say yes, because the policy's not being enforced consistently in a particular group, because the senior center didn't want them. The library doesn't have the issue. And so my concern is, as the governmental organization laying a policy, how do you ensure that it's uniformly applied across the town? We have multiple groups with potential buildings run by multiple organizations. Could have Parks and Rec and Patrol Mobile Facility, the Board of Ed, there are multiple groups. How are we going to ensure that it's uniformly applied across the town?
What all this resolution addresses is the need for general liability insurance. There may be other reasons why a group should not use a particular facility, but this just says that none of these government facilities can turn the people down because of insurance.
If I may, yes. First of all, would be the appropriateness. I mean, the library is obviously used for certain reasons, senior center for some things. But I would say that we've in fact had that. I can think of two specific instances where people asked to use the senior center and were told no, and those people were very welcome in another facility in the town. I, I don't have a problem with that necessarily, as long as it's, it's, you know, I think that they should have a certain amount of ability, these commissions that oversee them, to make those decisions, as long as they're not discriminating or being somewhat arbitrary.
My question has to do, somebody's going to be liable if something goes wrong. Does this mean that it falls to the town insurance?
The town insurance will always cover the town. There's never a question about what the town insurance covers. The question really comes up with someone who has an issue with the particular group. Someone gets hurt as part of the actions of the group using the facility. And I can't say that I have the answers to what that does, as far, how that's handled, but the fact, and again, the town always has deep pockets. So someone could say, "Well, they did it, but they, but you let them use it." I mean, all it takes is a lawyer and a judge, and you can bring any action you want. But the fact is, the town will always be covered. We have been assured of that every way. Council of France might be able to, you know, elaborate a little bit more on who exactly we're trying to, we're trying to protect the town to a certain extent.
Right. Some of, some of the issues are, for example, the, to the quasi-government facilities, the RGC and DTC use town facilities, neither one of them carries liability insurance. Organizations like the Higgin Women's Club that supports the senior center luncheons, they don't carry insurance. There are many other groups like that. The garden club is an example, is not a town sanctioned event, it's a club in the town. They don't have liability insurance, but they certainly provide service to the town. By the law, we would have to require all carry liability insurance at many hundreds of dollars a year they would have to carry. Some of the clubs have no revenue generation process. So the fault was to get opportunities for groups to provide service to the town and allow them to use the facility to provide that service without having to incur a cost that really is the burden because they're not providing insurance. So that was the fault behind it, trying to capture that.
I think it's, I think it's, it's very understandable, the way it goes. I just, you know, I, I think there are the questions you made, that you brought up, which I think are worthwhile, about how the decision is made and that there might be other reasons. You know, in the second premise or whereas, where it focuses on promoting programs that enhance the quality of life for the residents of Ledyard, that is somewhat of a qualifying statement, which could help with certain organizations, but thank you for your statements.
And I, I just want to reiterate that the real extent of this particular regulation is that it, it's, it addresses the general insurance requirement. There are lots of other reasons why a group might not be the right group for a particular facility. So this addresses the insurance only.
Any other questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McRatten?
Yes.
Mr. Saams?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Item number two, Mr. France.
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign a proposed one-year lease agreement between the town of Ledyard and makeup by a CG LLC to lease unit number six of the Gales Ferry wedding located at seven Harrowmont Road to commence on June 1st, 2014 and end on May 31st, 2015.
Second. This was the item that was discussed at the public hearing. Any other comments you'd like to make?
There are two, two changes to the actual lease that didn't get updated. During the discussion, finance, we had agreed that the rent would increase by 10% each year. The lease still says just 5%, so instead of 420, the second year should be 440, and the third year 484, instead of 441. I talked with Mr. Bancorp, and you agreed that was what we discussed. And the second is that the end date should be June 30th, 2015, so the 13-month lease. So we get them all synced, and we respond, so firmly another change in the date to June 30th, 2015.
Assuming no objection there. Any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. McRatten?
Yes.
Mr. Saams?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Item number three.
Make a motion to approve proposed provisions to the resolution establishing administrative department head benefits as contained in the draft dated May 21st, 2014.
Second. Discussion.
Essentially, this updates the existing resolution to account for changes in department heads, so it has a few, takes a few away. And then codifies the matching sick, sick day policy for payout, terminates some of the, some of the policies that existed for paying out of sick pay termination. It also increases very small stipend for longevity, very small amount, because it's not what we paid out. And that's the gist of the, of the adjustments. But basically bringing it up to date to go along with the defined contribution plan that we have in the town and codify that with our department administration.
Any further questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Saams?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McRatten?
Yes.
Mr. Saams?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Item number four.
Make a motion to approve proposed town of Ledyard fraud policy as contained in the draft dated May 21st, 2014 and recommended by the auditors.
Second. Discussion.
Background, for several years, the auditors have recommended the town of Ledyard have the fraud policy. They recommended language. I went and looked, and the town, it was Hampton, Connecticut, has almost identical language from 2005 when it was due to their policy. And the finance director indicated that's probably how long the auditors have been asking the town to have a consistent policy. Much of what's in the policy is elsewhere throughout other regulatory documents within the employee manual, but this then puts everything into one policy in one location without any fraud. Leaves the mayor as the person responsible for investigating the fraud at a point of contact for any indication of fraud, and then keeps the town, he will then keep the town council apprised of any issues of concern.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McRatten?
Yes.
Mr. Saams?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Item number five.
Make a motion to set the individual stop-loss limit for health care plan at $175,000, including prescriptions, provided the premium cost is $4,000 to $6,000 or less.
Second. Discussion.
What the, the gist of the, or the impetus for looking at this issue was significant increase in the health insurance here, significant cost increase to draw, increase in the budget. For many years, the individual stop-loss, and I'll explain that, essentially, for each individual employee, the usage of the health care, an individual stop-loss limits the liability for the town and each individual. For many years, it was $100,000. Two years ago, they increased to $125,000. This year, we're going to $175,000. We've looked at the last nine years of data, and in seven of those nine years, we would not, we would have had more revenue to the town based on a decrease in administrative costs. Essentially, what it is doing is shifting the risk from the insurance company back to the town. The most, the highest number of people, the individual stop-loss was four for the last nine years, it was two of those years. And even if we did that, the premium savings, the administrative cost savings for the plan would almost cover that. On the other seven years, we would have retained money to the town. In fact, we, we just got the estimate back from the insurance consultant, and it's actually about $40,000. So it is an additional $40,000 less than we were considering at finance.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McRatten?
Yes.
Mr. Saams?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. I understand we're not ready with number six yet.
That's correct. Questions, it's a finance committee meeting that the mayor is working on, so we'll defer.
Okay. Item number seven.
Motion to transfer up to $7,000 from account 21090305, 58915, CNR designated to account 2103050157000, senior center new equipment for on-spot automatic tire chain installation on the senior center vans. In addition, reimburse account 21090305, 58915, CNR designated the same amount by receipt of the grant funding.
Second. Discussion.
The impetus for putting the chains on was during the snowstorm, we had the need to transport residents of the town to shelters, the McRatten and other Stonington other locations. It was identified that we didn't have vehicles for some of the residents that are wheelchair-bound that the senior center van is perfectly suited for. There is federal grant money available to the Nuclear Safety Emergency Program that would cover this installation for evacuation purposes. Certainly, that is for, because we're in the blast of millstone, it's principally for that, but it doesn't mean we can't use it for other, other reasons. So the cost of the installation and the purchase of the chains is covered fully by the grant, and we have to spend the money upfront, which is why we're authorizing, and then it'll be reimbursed, hence the sending the money back to the CNR capless fund.
Discussion. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McRatten?
Yes.
Mr. Saams?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Okay. There is time.
I think it looks like four to nine.
Yeah. Okay, here we go. So as you can imagine, Mr. Hennick, our FO, Freedom of Information guru up at the state, gets lots of letters. So here's one, here's a letter that he, oh, he may have received. Dear Tom Hennick, a couple of days ago, we received a request from public records, and it is a doozy. All emails sent or received by members of the town council from January 1st, 2010 to the present. That will be thousands and thousands of messages. As you might imagine, the person making this request is well-known to us, and I called him right up to abolish his request. I also told him there was no way we can respond to his ridiculous request. I told him to get real, and that, if that, we were not going to, oh, and that we were not going to even bother starting to look for the records if he did not refine his request down to a manageable size. Now he's threatening to file a complaint. Signed, trying to be reasonable. Okay. Two experts responded, and two different answers to the question, and we will be able to decide which is the correct answer. Henry, you are doing great, great. The Freedom of Information Act provides that people may have access to public records and that they may have copies of such records as they may request in writing. However, this request is so broad that it really doesn't qualify as a request. Tom answers, what part of access don't you understand? Sure, this fellow may be a bit ambitious, and I know I wouldn't want to read all those emails, but he has the right to make the request and he has the duty to respond. So one or two?
Two.
Two.
One.
One.
One. It's two.
Two.
What they, what he recommended is that you try to work with the person and ask them to narrow the request. And the gentleman that was there, from the reporter public side, says that quite often when he asks for something, nobody ever suggests to him, "Could you kind of tell me what it is you're looking for?" And that sometime if you work with those people, they will narrow their request. Now, again, if they want every, every email required to comply...
How is it possible to obtain them?
That's why we have to update the server.
The mail server has to download the file. It doesn't mean it's free.
You're not required to give it free.
Well, it says, correct me if I'm wrong, it says, "All email correspondence..."
All emails sent or received by members of the town council.
What if Roxanne doesn't have?
The mail server has. Because I'm saying the mail server has.
Well, you don't...
Oh, by the town council. I define the town council as all of the town leaders' emails.
Oh, okay. No, no. That's why we're so careful. Town councilor emails. So whenever we respond to something, you know how we always copy Roxanne? That's why it's so important to do that. And then it would all be on the server.
Well, it's on the server. It's on the server.
Not if you don't include Roxanne.
Yes, it is. It's on the mail server. It's on the mail server for the town. All they have to do, all that Regina would have to do, is go to my account, and she can download every email that has ever been sent, depending on how big the store, within the limit of the storage of the...
Right. How would we charge them? I mean, for that amount of time that's going to be expended by Regina and the amount of paper or whatever.
Well, you can charge a reasonable amount. The question is, what's considered reasonable?
Maybe for this case, what I, what I would expect is not hard copy, what I would expect is electronic media. So you have the cost, labor cost to accurately download the information and then transfer it to electronic media, the thumb drive, CD, DVD, whatever the storage requirement would be for that.
Okay. But if we're going to pay, or, you know, compensate Regina, and I don't know, I don't know how many hours that would take her to do that.
We've got an answer here.
I thought when we were at the FLI conference, they said that we couldn't charge for labor, we could only charge for the materials.
That's correct. You're right.
Because you could make an argument that that's your staff's job, job to provide.
That's why you would say, you know, we will respond in a timely fashion, providing our schedule gives us the time. So you might only be able to send a portion this week and a portion next week and so forth. But as long as you're making an attempt.
And they did, they did even discuss the idea of what's considered timely.
Just a question, did it specify the sitting council? I mean, is it making reference to historical councils?
From this day, from this day to...
It seems to me that there has to be a qualification somewhere, because someone like that could effectively tie up town staff to the point where they could not do their job.
You, you only have to do it during time available, correct?
Right. So that's why if you could only send 20 this week, or give them 20 this week, that's what you do. And as long as you're making an attempt, you're making an effort. It's not like you're going to wait six months to respond. So if you respond within a timely F response, within four, four days or so, you can say, "We've got your request, we're working on it." And then, you know, you could do it in chunks. You wouldn't have to... You wouldn't have to do it the whole thing at one time.
Okay. Could we then also list that person in a line item, line item for town expenses?
No.
So I just want to explain for the people watching, the reason we care about this and think about it is because if two town councilors exchange email, and then another one, one of them forwards it to the rest of the town council, and it turns into a discussion via email, it's an illegal meeting, because the public was not able to observe the way they can observe this meeting here. So all town boards, committees, commissions, and the town council have to adhere to this to make sure that we don't conduct business in private, so I just wanted to put that in.
And I think we've been very good about that, and have continued to get...
We also have a policy of...
We do, that's correct, so, very good. We did not pass the test, so there will be another one at the next...
The whole side got it wrong. Congratulations to Kevin and John.
So they passed the test as a stop?
The meetings will continue.
Before we adjourn, before we adjourn and sign off the students' paperwork, it is just about 10 minutes to 8:00. We have not been here a whole hour. If you did not arrive before 7:10, I'm gonna ask you please not to ask us to sign the papers. Motion to adjourn, sir?
So moved. Second.
adjourn without exceptions, please.